Now, I will say that it is incorrect on the panel's sheet of paper. It has been set for 4:30 the entire time and we just simply didn't make the change on the piece of paper. So Mr. Geary certainly was apprised of this well beforehand that it was, this was the time to be. He doesn't happen to be here yet, and so we will do this the same way we have in the past, toward we'll move forward, and when Mr. Geary gets here, we will pause it and allow him to sit down and he can take part. Now, I understand Ms. Howard is abstaining from this, correct? No, on the next one. Okay, so Ms. Howard will participate.
When she stops chewing.
Excuse me?
It's when she stops chewing.
Oh, yes. My name is Stephen Stubbs. I'm a local attorney in town and I'll be moderating. So what we will do is we'll start with our 30-second opening statement. If Mr. Geary doesn't get here in the next 30 seconds, he will lose his opportunity for an opening statement. Yes, Mr. Barrett?
Would you please introduce the panel?
Oh, am I supposed to do that?
For the 10th time, Sun City Summerlin.
I will introduce the panel, I'm so sorry. We have Mr. George Asad here. He is a former Las Vegas Municipal Court Judge and an attorney in town, so we certainly thank everybody for being here. We also have Karen Steelman. She's auxiliary director and a radio host, and so she has some very interesting questions that have come up. Am I supposed to give commentary as well?
If you do.
No, okay.
Only for Travis.
This is all for Travis's ego anyhow.
Okay.
Just introduce him.
Okay.
You left out fragile.
Well, Melody Howard, she's actually the Nevada Chapter President for Veterans and Politics International and U.S. Army, so thank you very much. Mr. Rob Lauer, U.S. Army. Mr. Forrest Darby, Veterans Politics International member and also U.S. Army. We have Mr. Travis Barrett. Everybody give a round of applause for Mr. Travis Barrett. All right. Thank you very much. He's a local attorney in town and my friend, and so I can poke at him just a little bit. Okay. Mr. Richard Chirchio, I can't actually see your credentials there. In fact, it's written too small because you have so many.
I don't think so.
All right.
Former councilman, North Las Vegas, Ward 4.
Okay, former city councilman, North Las Vegas, Ward 4. We also have Byron Brooks, and I can't see his tag either, so I can't say what is going on, but... Army. Yeah, Army, there we go.
There it is.
We have Andre Haynes also. He's Veterans and Politics International, in charge of public relations, and would I like to say, best of luck, Mr. Haynes? No. Very good-looking gentleman. Okay. Unlicensed, Mr. Barrett, but no, I'm just kidding, Mr. Barrett. And then we have Jason Brooks as well, and he is...
Marine Corps retired.
United States Marine Corps retired, so thank you very much. So is that okay, Mr. Barrett?
Man, you're busting my chops.
Okay. Mr. Geary was here and then he disappeared again.
Restored.
Okay. Wow, okay. Well, I promised to start on time, and that's exactly what I'm doing, okay? So we're gonna move forward, and if he misses his 30-second statement, then, you know, I'm sorry. So we have here the two candidates for city council for Ward 4, Mr. Stavros Anthony. Did I pronounce that correctly?
You actually did.
There you go. He's the incumbent and current city councilman, and we have his challenger, Mr. Frank Geary. And so we'll start with your 30-second statement, Councilman Anthony.
Okay, thank you, Steve. First, again, my name is...
Can you turn on your microphone, please? There you go.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Again, my name is Stavros Anthony. I was elected to the Las Vegas City Council to represent Ward 4 four years ago. If everybody remembers 2009, it was a very difficult time for this valley with the drop in housing prices and property taxes, and I will say in 30 seconds that this city council, with Oscar Goodman and with the current Carolyn Goodman, I believe has done a great job in ensuring our budget, that we balanced our budget, that our budget stayed intact.
Thank you very much. Time is up.
Thank you.
And I do interrupt because of the rules. It's not because I don't like ya, but we're adhering to all the rules here. So, Mr. Geary, 30-second opening statement, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Frank Geary. I'm running for city council, Ward 4. I've been a newspaper reporter for 23 years, the past decade, much of the past decade with the Las Vegas Review-Journal. I was their top investigative reporter. I think I'd be a breath of fresh air in City Hall, and if you can take a look at my website, frankgeary.com, you can learn more about me. Appreciate you taking a look and learning more about me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so now our panel will present questions. You have exactly one minute to answer those questions. The panel member can also answer follow-up, and if there are any mentions of each other in your answers, there will be an opportunity for rebuttal. That's given. And so we're gonna start with George Asad. Please, Mr. Asad.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Geary, did I detect a Boston accent?
I'm afraid so.
I won't hold that against you. I grew up in Boston myself. Anyway, and your name is Stavros? Is that right?
Yes, it is. Nice Greek boy. It's a Greek name.
Are you a U.S. citizen?
Yes.
Okay. With a name like Stavros, you're a citizen?
I go to Greece, and everybody's first name is Stavros. Here, I'm the only one.
You sure you don't wanna change it to Steve or something?
Love Stavros.
I have a question for you.
Do you have a question there?
Stavros, who taught the Greeks how to make baklava?
The Lebanese.
My mom did.
Well, who taught the Greek population how to make stuffed grape leaves?
My mom did.
You won't give any credit to the Syrians or the Arabs?
No. My mom gets all the credit for that, I'm so sorry.
Well, how about a serious question? Recently, there's been quite a controversy about the Neapolis. The gentleman that was supposed to build it out and turn it into a gay nightclub has had come to light through the RJ. Bankruptcy issues, his employees have left because he couldn't pay their salaries. He has a myriad number of issues and problems as far as suitability going forward. Does that change anything going forward, or how would either of you handle that situation going forward as far as proceeding with this individual to build out the Neapolis as a gay nightclub and move forward in that direction?
Well, first of all, out of fairness, if Mr. Geary would like to comment on Greek food, you're certainly welcome to first.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Love it, love it, love it, yeah.
So, Mr. Geary, could you please start with this question?
Sure. Would I continue? I think the Neapolis, it's, you know, we took it on, we've gotta kinda see it through to some extent, but what I would like to see is us to stop putting money into bars downtown on Fremont Street. How many bars do we need serving craft cocktails? There was a story in The Sun the other day about two sisters who the city gave $84,000 to to start up yet another restaurant bar downtown. What I would like to see is us look outward toward 4, look at some of our, what I count six or seven shopping centers in our ward that have lost their anchor tenants, and when I look at a project and think, you know, a supermarket selling groceries, two neighbors, to me, that pencils a little better. At least initially, at least in my mind, it pencils a little better than yet another bar downtown or another, you know, novelty zipline or something downtown.
Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony?
Thank you. Well, you know, what we're talking about here is downtown redevelopment. When I was a police officer, retired four years ago, but when I was a police officer working at Fremont Street, it was all pimps and hookers and robbers, and I tell you what, the last five years downtown is absolutely exciting. It is a great place to go. We have a top internet corporation that's going in downtown, Zappos. We have bars, we have restaurants. You go down to Friday and Saturday night, there's 2,000, 3,000 people down are having a great time, and what the city of Las Vegas, what we are supposed to be doing is helping small businesses open up businesses because they're gonna create jobs, they're gonna put people to work. So a gentleman comes to us and says, "In the Neapolis, which has struggled for many, many years, I want to put the largest gay lesbian business in downtown Las Vegas to create excitement, to bring jobs, to bring people down there." We are going to help him as much as we can. He's running the problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, follow-up question, Mr. Asad.
But if it comes to fruition that what the RJ's reporting is true, that he's just financially not suitable to go forward, would that change your opinion on how to proceed? Would you move on to another potential tenant?
Mr. Geary?
I, you know, I'd have to look at the numbers and see what, you know, see what they're saying and see what the long-term projections are before I would decide whether to, you know, get rid of the guy. But again, at the same time, I'm just not that big on downtown. I've got two little children. I don't go downtown. I would rather see that money reinvested in our neighborhoods in Ward 4. Those are the neighborhoods that got us on, you know, some of the best, some of the lists of the best places to live, and they're being neglected, and we need to get anchor tenants in there, and we need to get some median landscaping, or throw the people a bone and give them something to at least let them think the city's with them is trying to bring their, with them in trying to bring their property values back up. A little median landscaping might help everybody's property values creep up. We see tons of median landscaping at the tourist gateways and whatnot, so what about the gateways into our subdivisions, you know?
Thank you very much. Mr. Anthony?
Well, you know, specific to your question, it is the, it is the job of the city of Las Vegas to try to help businesses open up, to provide opportunities for them. If somebody comes in and we try to help them and they can't do it, then they can't do it, and they move on, and then somebody else comes in. But, you know, I'm from Detroit, Michigan. Detroit, Michigan is a tough city. It was just rated in Forbes Magazine as the worst city in the United States. I don't want downtown Las Vegas to be rated as the worst city in the country. If downtown Las Vegas thrives, every single other ward in the city of Las Vegas is going to thrive, including Ward 4, which is a great place to live and a great place to work, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, just to be clear, you left and then it became the worst city? Is there any... No, I'm just kidding. All right. Ms. Steelman?
Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us here today. Mr. Anthony, would you please address criticisms that have been made to you about your seemingly dismissive and rude behavior towards citizens who are addressing the council?
I'm not sure what criticism that is. Is there something specific?
You've never heard any criticisms about your behavior towards citizens who are addressing you?
I believe there was an article in The Sun, a little small article, paragraph in The Sun about that, but nobody's ever called me, nobody's ever contacted me, nobody's ever said I've been rude to them. I attend all the public meetings, whether they're recommending or whether they're city council, I listen to public comment. I return phone calls and emails, so small article in The Sun, that's not gonna bother me. I take care of the public.
Thank you. And Mr. Geary, you stated that, or it's stated on your website, that you are, award-winning articles are for noting corruption in government, and you worked for the RJ for how many years?
I worked for the RJ from 2000 until 2011.
Would you say there's any corruption at the RJ?
Corruption at the RJ? We don't make enough to have corruption at the RJ. That's one thing. Corruption at the RJ? Well, I know it's, I know it's a hard sell, and I found myself trying to sell it every day, and it's a hard sell, but I was in the newsroom. I wasn't down in the hot bedroom. I wasn't poking my head in there, giving them my two cents. You know, I was covering the news and covering it straight up like I always have, and, you know, I think my awards speak to that, that I, you know, I'm an objective newspaper reporter. The RJ wasn't handing out those awards, those were handed out by the Nevada Press Association. Corruption at the RJ? No. What I can tell you is what I saw are people who work really hard and they're there, you know, as long as they have to be. They come in...
10 seconds.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, reporters come in in the morning, they don't know how long they're gonna be there. You know, they could be there, maybe they get out at 5:00 like everybody else, but maybe they're there till 9:00 o'clock, you know, two, three times a week.
Thank you very much. Time's up.
Thank you.
Is that all?
That's all.
Now, if you would like any opportunity, you were given separate questions to just make a short comment on anything, I'll offer that to you, and if not, we'll just move on. Mr. Geary?
I'm sorry?
Would you want to make a comment on his question, and he'll have the opportunity to make a comment on your question?
His question was about rude behavior towards citizens.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, what I, what I can tell you is that for 23 years, I was a newspaper reporter, and when people couldn't get through to people like Mr. Anthony, they would call me. I've always taken calls, always, and I get called all the time, and I get called from some people, you know, who are calling me about the marsons that landed in their backyard or about, you know, their ex-wife and how horrible she is and blah, 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 and how I gotta cover their child settlement case. You know, I get that all the time. I tell them, "I can't cover a child settlement case." Yeah, you spend, you spend a lot of time on the phone with people, just kinda explain to them why you can't, you know, do anything with their, with their particular predicament. But, you know, usually when they call with a frustration about the government, I do find that there's usually a story there, and you give those people the time of day and try to hear them out, and, you know, maybe they're way over here in left field, but they've got a couple things that, you know, pique your interest, and so you go look at those couple things, and those lead to a couple more things, and next thing you know, you're peeling an onion.
Thank you very much. Okay. And Mr. Anthony, his question was on corruption. Did you want to comment on that?
I read the RJ in the morning, and I don't know anything about corruption at the RJ.
Thank you very much.
And you're not rude to people?
Okay, Ms. Melody Howard, do you have any questions?
I'm actually gonna pass.
Okay. Mr. Forrest Darby?
This is interesting. We've been going all day. We started this morning, and for the first time, someone in front of me asked my question. I do have the article from The Sun, because we, I don't believe we've ever met. I don't believe we've ever met, so I decided I needed to learn a little bit about some of the people that we're gonna interview. The Sun can't, newspapers can be brutal and unfair. I just wanna say that, but the article, you know, accuses you of laughing while this woman is in tears presenting her story about redistricting and so forth, and anyway, it's very, and then they go on and they say, "Even after that, when you were laughing and joking while she was in tears, the next person up, you were still talking to one of your fellow councilmen, and the person just stood there, and they said, 'Why haven't you started speaking?'" And this is, "I'm not gonna start speaking until Mr. Anthony stops talking." And so it is a brutal article, and I would like you to expand. I know you must have read this sucker, and that was my concern. I'd like you to expand a little more on it.
Sure. I mean, I was actually kinda surprised when I, when I saw the article. It's the first time it's been, it was written, it was the last time it was written. I mean, you have to kinda understand a city council meeting, we're, we're a meeting for about eight hours. So during that eight-hour period, now, we get up, we go to the bathroom, you know, my staff comes over to give me information, I have a question, I may go over and talk to another councilman, so, I mean, we're, just watch the meeting, and we're all kinda moving around a little bit because it's a long day. So if a reporter or somebody interprets that as being rude, I apologize for that because that's not what it was. We just move around, and I don't recall ever laughing during somebody's public comment when they were crying. I don't recall that. I would be very surprised if that actually happened because I just don't remember that. So it's all taken in the context.
And Mr. Geary, did you want to comment on that, on that question?
I have a different question for Mr. Geary, but that's whatever you...
Let's just, let him have an opportunity to comment the question.
My comment would be, I've sat through meeting after meeting after meeting as a newspaper reporter, you know, I'm there all day, just like the elected officials are. When they walk out the door, I'm there probably for another three hours writing my three or four stories out of the meeting. I'm usually the last one to leave those meetings, I put my little, when I used to cover the county commission. And as far as my cellphone, I will not have my cellphone in public meetings. They come around, the meetings are, you know, twice a month, and I guess I just don't understand what could be more pressing than the business at hand in front of us. So I would turn my cellphone off and, you know, be attentive, and, you know, there is something to the adage that perception is politics, and, you know, whether you're, whether you mean to be indifferent or not, you know, it's best to be attentive and pay attention during a meeting.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I have a question for Mr. Geary. Yeah, the article actually used the word laughed, but I'm glad you came in, you know, right when this meeting started, so you didn't get a chance to hear the previous discussion. Have you ever heard of the Veterans Court here in Clark County? And if you have, what do you think? Some of the stuff I've read that you've, that you've written, you sound like a fiscal conservative. And do you think it's worthwhile that we spend the money on a Veterans Court here in Clark County if you're that fiscally conservative?
I consider myself a fiscal conservative. I consider myself, just fiscally, to have common sense, and to me, the Veterans Court is just common sense. In the long run, it is gonna save us money, and the way I feel about the Veterans Court is I don't think anybody deserves a free ride, but I support the Veterans Court. I mean, in other words, I don't think anybody deserves special treatment in the criminal justice system, but I think with the Veterans Court, it's just a good idea. And if you have a veteran who has never been, you know, arrested previously, and he's a first-time offender, the Veterans Court's a great idea. And what I would like to see is, and forgive my ignorance, it hasn't, it, I'd like to see an effort, a greater effort made toward getting those veterans all of their benefits. If they're in, if they're gonna be in the Veterans Court system, I think an important part of that is to get that veteran all of his benefits, and we probably won't see him in the court system ever again. And if you look at the numbers...
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I would say if a question is not directed at you, and I offer you an opportunity to make a statement on that question, if you please stay on topic, and that goes for everybody involved, okay? Mr. Anthony, that was not directed at you, but would you like to make a comment on the Veterans Court?
Sure. I mean, absolutely, I endorse the Veterans Court. We should be spending money there. These are people that have served our country, and if we can give them special attention in a courtroom to help them out, which I believe is what the Veterans Court is trying to do, help these folks out, then we should be doing that.
Thank you very much. Are you done, Mr. Darby?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Barrett?
Just for the record, 40% of my practice is helping veterans get all the benefits that they've earned and they, that they deserve, and trust me, I do a lot of swearing because we deal with institutional stupidity in the largest bureaucracy in human history. That being aside, both of you guys, one is a retired Metro Officer, one is a reporter, you know things about what goes on in this city that most of us wouldn't know. I mean, that just comes with the territory. You know stuff because of where you've been and the rest of us haven't been. As a city councilman, what is your role in guaranteeing the civil rights of the citizens of the city of Las Vegas specifically as it pertains to police and their, the actions taken by the police officers? What's your role? Go first, Mr. Stubbs.
Mr. Anthony, could you start with that?
Okay. As a city councilman, what's my role in ensuring the civil rights of people are not violated by the police?
Yes.
Well, we, as a city council, our, our number-one oversight over the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department is fiscal. I'm on the Fiscal Affairs Committee for Metro, so about 30% of Metro's budget is from the city of Las Vegas, so from that standpoint, we have to make sure that they're, that they're fiscally responsible with their, with their funding. So we're kind of a, we're kind of a watchdog over Metro, and if we see something that isn't being done correctly in the community in terms of policing, first of all, I'm gonna know about it from personal experience, and we can call the sheriff up, and we can ask the sheriff to come to a city council meeting and to hold a public hearing on a particular issue and talk about it in public and find out what the police department is doing, what our role should be as a city council. Some places we do have a role, some places we don't have a role.
Thank you very much. Mr. Geary?
Mr. Anthony's right. City council does have the, you know, fiscal oversight role over the police department, but at the same time, I'm afraid a lot of people in this community seem to have forgotten we do have a citizen review board as well, and the citizen review board is a Clark County function, but it is, it is the Metropolitan Police Department's citizen review board. The citizen review board has been left, you know, somewhat, somewhat left to the side because of ongoing, you know, court lawsuits that have been filed and whatnot, but the citizen review board, I think, needs to get more attention from the city council and the county commission. People need to be made aware that it's there, they need to know what its function is, and they need to use it. If it gets used, you know, I've seen...
10 seconds.
I've seen the citizen review board bring about sweeping changes over just traffic stops where policy matters came to the surface that no one knew about, and you just don't know until you file the complaint and someone looks into it.
Thank you very much.
I have a follow-up question. So the short answer is not much, right? Because we have a civilly-elected sheriff, right? So you're not his boss, isn't that correct? So there's a move afoot to eliminate the constitutionally-elected sheriff and create a public safety officer under the direction of the city manager. That's been nosed about several times in other jurisdictions. What do you think of that? Should city council have the power to hire and fire a public safety officer as a replacement for the sheriff?
Mr. Geary, could you start with that?
I'd have to look at it, but yeah, I don't see a problem with it. You know, they do it, and that's the way it's done in most cities. It's just that we have this, you know, county-city collaborative effort with Metro, but no, I don't have a problem looking at that. I wouldn't have a problem having, having the sheriff answer, the police chief answer directly to the city council. I think it would bring about increased accountability, and accountability that we need at this time with Metro.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony?
That's an interesting question. I, it's never come up in my four years on the city council, but I would be very hesitant to do that. The sheriff is elected by the people, he is accountable to the people. I think that should stay that way, and if the people don't like the sheriff, then they can remove him, or they can put somebody else in if they want. So to have the sheriff become a police chief that, that is selected by the city council, that may work in some communities, but here, it seems to work just fine having a sheriff accountable to the people. So I'm always hesitant to get rid of an elected official because that person is, is selected by the people and accountable to the people. So unless there's some more information out there to make me change my mind, I would really stick with the way it is.
Thank you very much. Mr. Churchill?
If I understand correctly, Las Vegas has specific ward voting, correct?
Correct.
You don't elect that large.
No, no, no.
We understand all the problems throughout the valley over here with all of the different municipalities and all the different wards. Council people make decisions regardless of what ward they represent for the entire city. In your minds, generally speaking, for your city, first, what would, what would you consider to be maybe the first two or three top priorities for this coming year or in the near future? And then more specifically, for your particular wards, because every ward is different in nature, what would be more pressing in your particular ward versus your city in general?
Can we start with Mr. Anthony?
Okay, well, if we start with my ward, the most pressing issue in Ward 4 was a fire station in Sun City Summerlin. Sun City Summerlin has around 12,000 people, 8,000 homes, about four or five ways to get in there. They didn't have their own fire station primarily for medical runs for senior citizens. So I spent the last four years securing the money and building, and we just opened up a fire station in 107 to provide first-class medical attention for those folks. So that was the most pressing issue when I came on, and that has been fixed, and the people in Sun City absolutely love it. The second pressing question is, in Ward 4, has been foreclosures. Ward 4 got hit very hard with foreclosures. A lot of people bought high, and then they couldn't make the payments, and they walked away, and what I wanted to ensure that a home in Ward 4 that was empty did not deteriorate to such a degree that it destroyed the rest of the neighborhood. So I made sure that the foreclosed homes in my neighborhoods stayed intact so they would make sure the rest of the neighborhood was fine.
Thank you. Uh, and Mr. Gary?
Um, as far as the ward question goes, number one issue in, in Ward Four is home values. Um, and, um, I, and, and the second issue would just be quality of life in the neighborhoods and what's happening as a result of the foreclosures and, um, and basically just what, you know, what's happening to neighborhoods there as a result of landlords coming in, paying cash, um, uh, and renting out the home. Uh, what I would like to do, one of my, one of my biggest priorities is to try to bring them together, um, realtors, banks, tenants, homeowners, try to increase homeownership and, and try to change the dynamic so that we have, you know, families moving in, 30-year fixed mortgages and not so many of these homes being picked up by out-of-town landlords. This, this, this community as a whole exhausts a lot of resources in bringing in outside money from out of the state. How much money with the rental, rent, number of rentals going up year after year after year? How much money is being spent in rental payments going out of the state?
Thank you very much.
Every month?
Thank you very much. Time is up. Um, we are actually a little tight on time, okay? And so, uh, so we're not going to do more follow-up questions, um, until we, we see that we have more time. So, uh, Mr. Byron Brooks, do you have a question?
I do and it may seem like a follow-up, but I'll try to make it not seem like...
Well, I meant follow-up questions to your own question. This is yours, so...
All right. Um, uh, Mr. Gary, this, this is a question for you and then, uh, part of it's for you, Mr. Anthony. Uh, when we talked about Veterans Court just a few minutes ago, what you'd said was you didn't think criminals deserved any type of preferential treatment. I agree with you on that point. Um, but we were talking about specifically Veterans Court and what you had said was a, you know, maybe first-time offender or something like that, that, that you could see working. So is there, with the special program that's being conducted right now in Henderson, is, is that something that you agree with the entire program? You're not aware of the entire program? Or you would want to take a look at that to see if that's something that would work in, uh, in Clark County?
No, I, I support the Veterans Court. I, I think it's cost-effective. I, I think it, it makes sense. I mean, the alternative makes no sense whatsoever, um, you know, to, to, to put people, I mean, I think, I think veterans need, you know, a chance of rehabilitation and, um, and I think they need, I think they need as much help. Unfortunately, veterans are flying under the radar in our community. And if they, and if Veterans Court, you know, puts them on the radar so that they can, you know, get in line for their benefits, I think it's great. But as far as, to answer your question specifically, I support Veterans Court. I, I think it's, I think it's the fair way to go and I think it's the cost-effective way to go. We're going to pay a lot more on the back end if these guys are incarcerated than we are trying to help them turn things around on the front end.
And then, Mr. Anthony, currently there's no, no real program, uh, you know, in, in the city, the county of Las Vegas. It's, it's typically just in Henderson right now. Is there anything that you could do to, uh, to help push things along so that the program is more part of the Las Vegas area as opposed to just being in Henderson?
Well, um, as, as a city councilman, I really don't have any authority over, uh, the, the Clark County court system. We do have authority over the municipal court system and we do have some specific programs there for, you know, people that, that abuse drugs, to help them in the court system, people part of domestic violence. That may be an interesting topic, uh, in municipal court to have, uh, a specific, uh, system for veterans, uh, for, for misdemeanor type of crimes. But, uh, the only influence I can have, and if you need me to do that, I can call the county commissioners, I know all of them, and say, hey, Veterans Court would be a great thing, uh, to help, to help these folks out when they get into the criminal justice system. So I would do that if you would ask me to.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Andre?
This is for, uh, councilmen. Can, can you please clarify in your position exactly what you have to do with, uh, Metro's finances?
Yeah, the, uh, the way the system is set up, um, the city and the county fund a portion of, uh, Metro's budget. We fund around 30%, uh, county funds around 40, 50%. So because of that, um, there's a, what's called the Fiscal Affairs Committee, uh, two council members, two Clark County commissioners and then one civilian. And then we meet once a month to approve, uh, the, the expenditures in the budget for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. So we currently do that. It's been around for a long time. I was recently appointed by Carolyn Goodman to that particular committee.
Okay. The, the 30%, does that go to a specific area or is that just, they're going to use it wherever they see fit?
They, they, uh, we appropriate the money to Metro. Uh, they put a budget together on specifically how it's going to be spent. They present that budget, uh, to the Fiscal Affairs Committee. Uh, the city takes a look at it, the county takes a look at it, and then we eventually approve the budget. So we're, we're, I mean, we do look at line items, but it, you know, the, it's kind of a, it's kind of a, um, a working relationship between the city and county, the sheriff, to make sure that Metro's budget is, uh, is expended appropriately and it's, and it's budgeted appropriately.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we are running short of time, so we will need to move on to the next one if that's okay. Mr. Jason Brooks? Yes?
Actually, uh, my question is going to be for both these gentlemen. Uh, Mr. Gary, you actually kind of touched base on it a little bit when you were talking about, um, the, the housing problem in, in Ward Four. Um, one of the things I'd like to ask is, um, what type of plan would you bring to the table to help homeless veterans? The national average in Las Vegas is actually, the, the homeless veteran rate in Las Vegas is double the national average. There's 62 per 10,000 people are homeless veterans in Las Vegas. There was 1,430 homeless veterans last year alone. So my question is, what would you be able to do to help veterans get into homes and not just rent homes, to actually own homes? There's a lot of problems that veterans face when they're, and Mr. Barrett will know, that when they're trying to get some of these, um, benefits that they deserve, they end up having to fight the VA, go through a lot of red tape. It takes years, sometimes three, three and a half years to get your full benefits. You can't work in between because you're dealing with, you know, medical procedures, surgeries. So you're pretty much just left out there, hanging out to dry. Some of them have to turn around and file bankruptcy because they can't pay their bills because they can't work and they don't have any money. And they end up homeless. What can you do to help them get into a home and get some homeownership even if their credit got tanked because they did have to file bankruptcy through that whole process?
Excellent question. Um, yeah, I don't mean to sound robotic, but again, I would try to get some veteran services officers out there. Where they would come from, I don't know. We don't have enough. But, you know, obviously I'd like to get these veterans their benefits, but that's not going to be an overnight fix. You're right, they're going to be on the streets while they're, you know, trying to battle, you know, the bureaucracy. Um, what would I do? The homeless is, is a problem. It's been an ongoing problem. Um, I, I would, I, I don't know what I would do. I would try to, um, again, identify the homeless that are veterans, um, see if there isn't a way we could, could work with, uh, US vets and the VFW and, uh, Salvation Army to see if we couldn't, uh, you know, set up, uh, um, some sort of, uh, uh, specific, um, you know, center where they could come and, and again, try to, try, try to get their benefits and not, and, and, you know, find a place specific for veterans where we, where they could find shelter and, and try to set up a shelter possibly through the Salvation Army or something like that. It's an excellent question.
Thank you. Time up. Uh, because of time, this will actually be, uh, the last question. So Mr. Anthony will, uh, will respond to this and then we'll have 30 seconds of your closing statements.
Um, you know, it's a great question. Uh, with, the city of Las Vegas does help veterans with housing right now. Uh, we provide city funding for the corridor, for homeless veterans to get them at least temporary housing. We do provide city funding and we funnel federal grants, uh, to, uh, apartment buildings that we've helped with nonprofits put together for veterans to get permanent housing. So we are, we are doing both of those, temporary housing, permanent housing. Uh, to get them help with a, with, to actually purchase a home, um, if there's a way the city of Las Vegas could do that, I'd love to hear it. I mean, we're obviously limited because we're just a city. So if people have ideas that, that can help us in our code, provide some type of help for some, uh, veteran to buy a home, um, I'd be glad to do it. The one thing I did was, uh, I did sponsor an ordinance that, um, that helped veterans open up businesses. It gave them special attention, special opportunities to actually open up a business to get to work, to make money, to actually purchase a home.
Thank you very much. That is time. Um, thank you very much, uh, for, for what you've done.